officially start our 2021 annual town meeting. And the meeting will come to order. We will be using the outdoor location again. But as of right now, it looks like we've eliminated the third location. As is our tradition, let's please stand and pledge allegiance to the flag. It's over here. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands on nation, under the principle of liberty and justice. Thank you. First, I'll do some introductions. I'm Doug Story, your town moderator. This is Pam Powell, our town clerk. And we have our select board and advisory in front of us. Select Board, Bob Sikansky, Jonathan Keep, and Sam Wysocki. Advisory, Brian Boyle, Anne Hurd, Omid Gharani, Craig Lauer, William Nichols, and Robert Guerrero. We also have our town administrator, right in front of me, Dawn Lowe, and our town council, Brian Falk. I just want to go through very few brief procedures before we start. We're going to do this just like we did last year, which worked very well, I think. We do have two locations. We have the outdoor, and whenever I call a vote or ask for debate, we'll first do the auditorium and then do the outdoors second. I'm going to repeat any questions asked from the outdoor because we've been told that that might help people out there hear it. As we all know, all our decisions are votes of aye or nay. We're going to try and keep our presentations brief and our comments brief, again, to try and do this meeting in a reasonable timeframe. We do have microphones in the front of the room that you can come up to. We didn't do that last year, so you can come up to the microphones, but please still give each other space. And we are asking that everyone keep their masks on unless they're speaking. If they're speaking, they may take it off. Let's all mute our cell phones if we haven't already. And with that, let's commence. We'll begin with Article One, to see if the town will vote to accept the reports of the Board of Selectmen and the Advisory Committee and any other town offices, boards, or committees. Is there a motion on that? Article's been moved and seconded. It was sponsored by the Board of Selectmen and was unanimous by Selectmen Advisory. Is there any debate on the article? Then let's vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous in the auditorium. Outdoors? You want to try that again, John?
Looks like a majority outside.
Okay, thank you. Article Two, unpaid bills for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. I do have one small change to Article Two, which I'm going to give to everyone right here and make it part of the main motion, so we don't have to do it as an amendment. And that was the amount paid to global. Do you have that?
Yes. Oh, I don't have that.
The amount. Dawn, do you have that? I had it, I lost it. Oh, I got it, sorry. Okay, unpaid bills, global. It should say, instead of 38642, it should say 29145. That's a lower amount. And the total amount for all of these unpaid bills changes from $7,517.162 to $7,422.65. Is that correct, Brian? Okay. So that's the motion. That's the main motion, that we accept these unpaid bills with that one change from what was printed in the warrant. Is there any debate on that? All right, then let's vote. All those in favor of Article Two? Okay, hang on, yes.
Was it moved? Yes, it did.
Thank you. Let's move the article. Thanks. Moved and seconded? Thank you. All right. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously in the auditorium. John, outdoors?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Okay, Article Three is the fiscal year 2022 operating budget. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds and otherwise the sum of $25,969,447.94. The article has been moved and seconded, and I believe we have a presentation from Advisory. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. And before I get started, I did want to thank the entire Advisory Committee and also our town administrator, town secretary, town accountant, town treasurer, and all of the department heads and committees for their work this year, which was done entirely over Zoom, so that was interesting. All right, so the bottom line this year when it comes to the operating budget is reflected on page four, or sorry, page three of your warrants, and on this slide right here, you see, the operating budget is increasing 2.48%. Next slide. But our total budgeted expenditures, which includes everything recommended as a capital appropriation or a warrant article spending item, that's an increase of 1.05% from last fiscal year to this fiscal year. Next slide. This just quickly gives everybody a sense of sources of revenue. I know that you're probably all familiar with this because it's pretty stable year over year. The vast majority of all the revenue in Bolton is in the form of property taxes, almost 90% of our revenue. We get 1%. Hello? Okay. Just under $300,000 in state aid, about $1.5 million in local receipts, and that's things like motor vehicle excise, license and fees, things like that. This year, our other available funds is actually a little bit bigger than normal because that includes over $200,000 of Chapter 90 funds, which we will be using to purchase a dump truck for the DPW. So that's not money that is being raised as part of the tax levy, which is a great thing. And then finally, you see we've got free cash of about $300,000, and then a borrowing, one borrowing that we're proposing this year for $115,000. Next slide. Sorry, this is a little tiny, but basically, this is the overview of the total expenditures. Education continues to be the largest single component of our budget at about 63%. If you're only looking at operating, it's more like 66%. Town departments, salary and wages is 14%, and then other operating for town departments, so that's things like supplies, equipment, buildings, utilities, all that, that's 9.2%. Then we've got insurance. Debt service is actually down a little bit this year, but I do just want to flag for everybody, we are anticipating that if the town approves the article for the fire truck, which is a proposed $800,000 debt-excluded borrowing, the debt service for that fire truck will show up on the FY '23 debt service line item. And then, just to close that out, you see that 3.5% of our total expenditures this year would be for the capital appropriations and warrant articles that we're recommending. Next slide. That just gives you all a visual of the different slices of our operating budget. I won't pause here because you can see that reflected on page three of your warrant as well. Next slide. This shows that, as I mentioned, actually, I just want to scroll down a little bit to the debt service line, which is about three from the bottom. You'll see that that is down 9.23%, but again, I think next year, almost that entire decrease will be made up for if we do approve the borrowing, because that'll be about $80,000 worth of debt service for the fire truck. Next slide. I won't spend too much time here because we'll be obviously voting on each capital item as it's presented, but I did just want to note that the only item on this list that we would be borrowing for this year is Article Number 19, the dump truck body and plow. And then Article 17 is the fire truck that I've been mentioning, where we would need to approve it this year and next week at the ballot, and the borrowing costs would come rolling in next fiscal year. And then, next slide, please. This is just, we've been trying to do this the past few years to give you a snapshot of the overall financial health of the town. So heading into this year, we usually try to have our certified free cash, which is a number we get typically in October. We like to have that end up between 3% and 5% of the total budgeted expenditures for last year. We were a little bit low this year, which meant that we actually had less free cash to be using for tonight's proposed budget. Nonetheless, we were able to meet, almost meet, our goal of having a free cash balance of $350,000. And basically, what I mean is, assuming that all of the articles tonight are approved, we will be left with $348,000 of free cash, which is just a little bit shy of what our goal is, so that's good news. Our overall reserves is right in the middle of where we want it to be. It's 8%, and we want it between 6% and 10%. Our debt service is actually just slightly lower than sort of our goal, which isn't a bad thing, but it does suggest that it's appropriate for it to go back up next year to show that we're making necessary investments. And then the last thing is that we are, as usual, able to fund 100% of our other post-employment benefit liabilities, and you know, that's, in a nutshell, that's things like health insurance and benefits for town retirees. So we're funding 100% of our contribution there. Sorry, okay, there we go. This was prepared by the assessors department. This is an estimate, and what I was told when I talked to Dave was, this is sort of a worst-case scenario, because when we estimate the tax rate at this point, what we're doing is we're just making a guess at what new growth numbers are going to be. And so it's possible that when everything shakes out, when the assessors are finalizing the tax rate next fall, it may be lower than this, but the estimate is that it will go from $20.86 per thousand to $21.13, which is a change of 1.29%. And the impact on the average single-family tax bill would be an additional $378. Just wanted to mention that, as you all know, Bolton really does rely heavily on residential property taxes, which is difficult to sustain, especially when we're facing some long-term needs in the education component of our operating budget, and also, obviously, the potential huge capital expense of a high school project. With all that saying, I also wanted to just mention that one of the things Advisory is really committed to for this fiscal year, this upcoming fiscal year, is to make sure that we really communicate well, not only with the departments, but also with the public. So on that note, if you ever have questions, I know sometimes people put their questions online, but we also want you to feel like you can come to us with any questions, too, because we want to make sure that we're helpful.
And now we have a presentation by the school, Nishova? Before I read through the budget.
My name is Pat Maroni, excuse me, and I am the Director of Finance for the Nishoba Regional School District. Next slide, please. I'd like to present the Nishoba Regional School District Fiscal Year 22 Proposed Budget. Our budget for this year is $59,222,941. This represents a 2.08% increase, 20% non-salary, 16% insurance and benefits, and salaries for existing personnel represent 64% of the budget. Next slide, please. Of the, the budget is broken down by high school debt, local revenue, and the total amount assessed. We have a fixed assessment for each town, which is the minimum local contribution, and it's determined by the state. The variable assessment, which I apologize, has a typo in that column. It should be $20,746,915. Bolton has a five-year rolling assessment percentage of 32.61%. And as you can see, the fixed assessment is $9,347,864, which is that minimum local contribution. The variable assessment is the percentage applied to that variable assessment above, which is $6,766,010. The debt assessment, which is any debt for the Nishoba Regional High School, is $203,749,000. This year, Bolton's assessment is $16,317,623, and it is a $466,000 increase from last year, which represents 2.94%. And you can see a historical assessment of Bolton over the last three or four years. Next slide, please. As you can see here, there are some more trends for budget increases and also changes in assessment over five years. Next slide, please. I was asked by one of the FINCOM members to put up a slide on OPEB funding for fiscal year '22, which is other post-employment liability. It represents the liability for the health insurance and other benefits paid to retirees after they leave employment, and that would be till they're deceased. And that would be, the OPEB liability for our district is $60,255,077. And projected funding balances as of OPEB as of 6/30/21 is $700,000. Fiscal year '22 OPEB funding is $50,000. Annual payment to fund liability over 30 years, according to the actuary table that we had done by Siegel, is $2.4 million. Bolton's portion of this would, if it was added to the assessment, and if we fully funded, would be $802,977. Do I have any questions?
Thank you very much, Pam.
Don Cole on Main Street? I'd like to, I have a grievous concern about the numbers that I'm seeing here. $60 million is almost three years of the entire town's budget. What are we doing to effectively lower this?
You want to speak to that?
You can speak here if you want. I'll back up.
Thank you. Mike Horish, School Committee Rep. Yes, it is a, it is a big, big issue. That's a big number, and the amount that we're putting into OPEB this year is not really a drop in the bucket, it's sort of a half a drop in a bathtub. The, you know, the issue of what to do with what I'll call extra funding has come up. This year, the school committee decided to take some extra money and accelerate the Free Full Day K program, which had a two- or three-year timeline, and said it was accelerated. It simply did not have the votes. The committee did not vote for it. It did not have the support. I've been a pretty vocal advocate about putting more into this. This is just sort of this liability that's hanging over our heads, but ultimately comes down to votes. And I guess this year, the committee had a preference to fund Free Full Day K, which I'm sure pleases a lot of people, but displeases a lot of others. It's not going anywhere. It's something that I, as I joined the committee, I sort of ran into, and it's something that I am advocating for, you know, depositing more money into that fund every year. I wish I had better answers for you, but I completely agree with you.
Could I ask that in future warrants, et cetera, this be disclosed? And, you know, maybe, you know, something simple like this that gives a reasonable estimate of the hole that we're in? Anyone care to second or first that as an amendment to the budget?
Here you, could you please repeat what you said?
I'd like to get that information disclosed in the warrant on an annual basis, so that the town knows the amount of the hole that we're in. I'd like to make an amendment to the budget, I guess, to disclose that in the warrant each year.
Yes, Bob?
Dawn, I didn't follow exactly what the information was that you wanted disclosed.
Basically, what's up on the screen, on the screen, what our unfunded liability is.
Okay, and the warrant itself belongs to the Selectmen. I don't know that it's really a question for the budget process, but as I sit here right now, I don't see any reason why, if the school district provides us the information, we can't include that in the budget.
Okay.
Or in the warrant, rather.
Yeah, I just, I want to make, I believe in full disclosure. I believe this is a huge number. This is almost three years of town budget. I mean, if we closed everything down right now, we'd still be paying this for two and a half years or so. And this is a huge number, and I think it needs simple disclosure. That's all.
We can add it to the warrant. It could be included in the Advisory Report or so. Okay. Dawn Lowe, town administrator, suggested that we could include that information either in the Selectmen's report at the beginning of the warrant or in the Advisory Committee's section at the beginning of the warrant.
That would be great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. Thank you for that attempt to provide for what has been asked for. I would, I would just like to let everyone know that we do have a section on the town website for the town meeting, and we do post documents there, including rules and the warrant and many other things. So that is a good place where we could post things if we have an opportunity to do that. I think we'll get into the budget now, and if we have other questions, while Pat's here, are there any other questions for the school? Okay, seeing none, thank you, Pat. So I'm now going to read through the budget, department by department, and then I'll pause at the end of a department to see if there are any questions on that particular department. And John, I would ask that you just let me know if you have a question out there, okay? Bueller?
Reverend's here.
Okay.
No problem.
So I'm going to pause after each department, and if you have any questions, if there's anyone who has a question or comment out there, please let us know. All right? And this is on, in your warrant, after the end of the articles, I think it's page 20, if you want to follow along. Selectmen, and these will be approved fiscal year 2022 numbers. $19,620. Town Administrator, 2,000, I better put my glasses on, $18,477. Yes?
You forgot, you didn't read your own budget, the top line.
I didn't read...
Your own, the 50.
Oh, I skipped moderator, excuse me. $50. Thank you. Takes a village, as I say every year. Advisory, $185. Reserve Fund, $100,000. Town Accountant, $102,616. Board of Assessors, $152,189. Treasurer, $114,961. Tax Collector, $74,687. Human Resources, $13,305. Legal Services, $70,000. MIS, $58,549. Town Clerk, $111,407. Elections, $6,035. Street Listing Registars, $3,150. Are there any questions on general government in the auditorium? Outside?
No questions.
Thank you. Continuing, Conservation Commission, $79,948. Planning Board, $76,602. Appeals Board, 200. Agricultural Commission, $1,746. Economic Development, 750. Town Buildings, $141,550. Town Hall, $27,865. Town Reports, $3,700. For a total, this is also general government, excuse me, $1,377,591. Are there any questions on general government? Outside?
No questions.
Okay. Public Safety, $210,525. Police Department, $1,537,650. Fire EMS, $536,006. Building Inspector, $34,693. Plumbing and Gas, $18,836. Wiring Inspector, $21,836. Emergency Management, $3,900. Animal Control Officer, $21,490. Traffic Lights, $1,800. Tree Warden, $52,185. For a total on public safety of $2,638,421. Any questions on public safety? Outside?
No questions.
Thank you. Education, we just heard the presentation, $16,982,031. I believe we already took questions on education. Thank you. Public Works, 800 Highway, $859,583. Construction and Maintenance, $209,100. Snow and Sand, $180,000. Street Lighting, $8100. Transfer Station, $226,985. Landfill, $6100. Sewer, $8700. Water, $5,000. Water, five thousand. Cemetery, eight thousand. For a total Public Works budget of one million, five hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight. Are there any questions on Public Works? Outside?
No questions.
Thank you. Human Services. Board of Health, fifty-three thousand, two hundred and sixty-three. Nursing, sixty-six hundred and fifty-five. Council of Aging, ninety-three thousand, three hundred. Veteran Services, forty thousand, four hundred and thirty-three. For a total Human Services budget of one hundred and ninety-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-one. Any questions? Outside?
No questions.
Thank you. Culture and Recreation. Library, four hundred and fifty-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-five. Parks and Rec, forty-four thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight. Historical Commission, six thousand, one hundred and fifty. Celebration Memorial Day, twenty-eight hundred. For a total of five hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-four. Any questions? Outside?
No questions.
Thank you. Debt Service, one million, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty-one. And I'll just keep going. Employee Benefits, one million, four hundred and fifty-two thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven. Other Insurance, one hundred and nineteen thousand, seventy-four dollars. For a total budget of twenty-five million, nine hundred and sixty-nine thousand, four hundred and forty-eight. Are there any other questions on the budget? Outside?
No questions.
Thanks, John. All right, let's have a motion on the budget, please. I don't believe we did that, did we? Move the question? This is a majority vote. We've already had debate. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Unanimous in the auditorium? John?
Unanimous outside.
Thank you. Okay, Article Four, Spending Limits of Revolving Fund Accounts. I believe we have an amendment of one of the items in this account. Brian?
Five thousand dollars to twenty thousand dollars. And I just want to explain, this doesn't, this doesn't change any amounts of money that are being spent tonight at all. It just increases the amount that is authorized to be used from the fund during the year. We're doing this in anticipation of more activity than originally anticipated from the tax title revolving account. And this was a request by our Town Treasurer.
I'd like to move the article.
Second. Second. We're first going to vote on the amendment. And just so everyone heard that, the amendment is to change the maximum amount expendable under tax title, the third line, from five thousand to twenty thousand. Is there any debate on the amendment to the article? Seeing none? All those in favor of the amendment to the article, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous inside? John?
Unanimous outside.
Thank you. Now we'll vote the article with that change, and...
Move the question?
Yes. Is there a question? Yes, we'll move the question again. That was the amendment first, so do we have a motion? Thank you. Second? Okay. Is there any debate on Article Four? Having been moved and seconded, we'll vote. All those in favor of Article Four as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Passes unanimously inside. John?
Unanimous outside.
Thank you. Okay, Article Five, to amend the ALS revolving fund to add a second signatory. Article's been moved and seconded. This is sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. There any, is there any debate on the article? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanimous? Thank you. John?
Unanimous outside.
Thank you. Waste Water Treatment Repair Facilities, Article Six, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds, forty-six thousand, forty-one dollars and thirty-four cents for repairs to the wastewater treatment facility. Sponsored is the Department of Public Works. Article's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this article? Seeing none? All those in favor of Article Six, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Unanimous inside? John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Article Seven, Tax Title Revolving Fund, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer from available funds to sum of five thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the tax title revolving fund. Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen. Article has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on this article? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Passes unanimously inside. John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Article Eight, Injury Leave Indemnity Fund, to see if the town will vote to accept, second to last paragraph of MGL's Chapter Forty-One, Section One-Eleven-F, to create a special fund known as the Injury Leave Indemnity Fund. Sponsored by the Board of Selectmen.
Moderator, I move the article. Second.
Article's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on this article? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Passes unanimously in the auditorium. John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Article Nine, Amendment to the Code of the Town of Bolton, Division One, Part One, Administrative Legislation, Chapter Seventy, Personnel Policies, Section Twelve, Fringe Benefits. See if the town will vote to amend the code to add the sentence at the end of the paragraph, and I won't read it, you can read it up there. And it's sponsored by the Board of Selectmen.
Moderator, I move the article.
Article has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. Passes unanimously. John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Article Ten, Name Change. Board of Selectmen to Select Board, amend the Code of Bolton to replace the terms Board of Selectmen and Selectmen throughout with the term Select Board and Select Board Member. Article has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on Article Ten?
Two-thirds.
Two-thirds, thank you. This is a two-thirds majority vote, so unanimous would be wonderful. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous it is inside. John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Okay. Article Eleven, Amendment to the Code of Bolton, Division One, Part Three, Zoning Bylaw, Chapter Two-Fifty, to amend Section Two-Fifty, Twenty-One-D, Accessory Apartments and Permitted Uses, to add accessory apartment to Section Two-Fifty, Twenty-Eight. Do we have a planning board? Excuse me, yes. Hi.
At a duly noticed planning board hearing held on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the planning board voted unanimously to support and recommend approval of Article Eleven of the warrant. Article Eleven is to amend Section Two-Fifty dash Twenty-One-D, Accessory Apartments, and Section Two-Fifty dot Twelve, Scheduled Permitted Uses, to allow for detached accessory apartments, as well as add accessory apartments to Section Two-Fifty dash Twenty-Eight Terms Defined. So this article is to allow detached apartments in residential zoning areas. Bolton currently allows attached accessory apartments in residential zoning areas. So this would allow someone who has a barn, a carriage house, or a garage that's detached from the principal dwelling to be used as an accessory apartment. The planning board feels that this gives homeowners more options for affordable housing and and other benefits.
Move the question, please?
Mr. Moderator, I'm...
Thank you. Article's been moved and seconded. We've heard the planning board's report. Is there any discussion on Article Eleven? John?
None out here.
Okay, and then we will vote. All those in favor of Article Eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. That passes unanimously. That was a two-thirds majority as well, and it did pass. John?
Unanimous here.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, for the next three articles, we're going to try a consent agenda. We did this last year. Consent agenda allows us to vote on a group of articles that are like-minded together and without debate. If for any reason anyone here does want to debate any of these articles, you certainly have the right to do that, and we will pull them out. So the first thing I would ask is for a motion for the consent agenda.
Mr. Moderator, I propose a consent agenda for Articles Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen.
Thank you. The motion for the consent agenda for Articles Twelve, Thirteen, and Fourteen has been made and seconded. We'll now hear the planning board report on these articles.
Thank you. Oh, can you hear? Is this on? Yes. Okay, thank you. Sorry, Danielle Spicer from the planning board. I'm going to read each of the topics for all three of them and then give a brief summary. At a duly noticed planning board hearing held on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the planning board voted unanimously to support and recommend approval of Article Twelve, to amend Section Two-Fifty dash Eighteen-F, temporary signs pertaining to the lease or sale of land or building to be removed within fourteen days after closing date of sale. This is basically just to allow temporary signage, used to be prohibit the word "sold" on temporary signs in the town. This is allowing that word "sold" to be on temporary, use as temporary signage, but it has to be removed within fourteen days. The planning board felt that this added real estate signs to be helpful engaging the real estate market in Bolton. For Article Thirteen, at a duly noticed planning board hearing held on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the planning board voted unanimously to support and recommend approval of Article Thirteen, to add Section Two-Fifty dash Eighteen, Outdoor Lighting. And this was basically, there is some outdoor lighting requirements that are in the town bylaws, but this went a little bit above and beyond for business, commercial, and industrial uses. And it basically is to provide lighting that would complement the character of the town, preserve the natural environment, enhance the night sky as a natural resource, and minimize light trespass along property boundaries, and diminish glare, and reduce energy consumption. So it's to supplement the Bolton designed review, current review criteria. And then the Article Fourteen, at a duly noted planning board hearing held on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-one, the planning board voted unanimously to support and recommend approval of Article Fourteen, to support the acceptance of Houghton Farm Lane. So this is Houghton Farm Lane, located off Sugar Road, as part of the Houghton Farm subdivision. It's been constructed in accordance to Bolton subdivision rules and regulations.
Thank you, Danielle. I'm now going to ask if anyone wants to hold any of these three articles, and if you do want to hold them, then we can discuss them and debate them. So that would pull them out of the consent agenda. Are there any holds on Article Twelve? That's the sign article. No holds. Any on Thirteen for outdoor lighting?
I'd like to place a hold on that.
Okay. Thirteen has been held and pulled out. Fourteen, Houghton Lane Acceptance. Okay, so now the consent agenda will be Articles Twelve and Fourteen. Thank you. John? Were there any holds outside?
No holds here.
Thank you. I did ask John to speak up loudly if I don't ask him every time, but thank you. I appreciate that. So we are now voting, I guess, let's redo the consent agenda as a motion for just Articles Twelve and Fourteen. Can we move that?
Mr. Moderator, I move the consent agenda for Articles Twelve and Fourteen.
Okay, that is just making the consent agenda for those two articles. So there's no debate? All those in favor of the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nay. Unanimous indoors? John? Okay. Now we can turn to Article Thirteen and have debate on that. Is there any debate on Article Thirteen?
Mr. Moderator, I move the article.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. We just want to put that article on the table. Thank you. And now, debate here, please.
Thank you. I move that Article Thirteen, Part B, Subpart Two, exemptions be amended to include places
Article Thirteen, Part B, and...
Subpart Two.
Subpart Two, exemptions, and...
Be amended to include places of worship.
Places of worship. So there's an article to make an amendment to, which would be Item H on the list of exemptions, that would add places of worship to the exemptions to this article. Is there a second for that amendment?
Second.
Okay, it's been seconded?
Yes, yes. Speaker...
I'm sorry. Thank you, Jonathan. Could you please identify yourself?
Yes, Dan Williams, Stillroad.
Thank you.
Dan Williams, Stillroad.
Thank you. So that amendment has been made and seconded. Is there further discussion on that amendment? Does the planning board have any discussion on that proposed amendment?
No, no further discussion.
Okay.
E.J. Herbison, Long Hill Road. Is places of worship defined in the current bylaws of Bolton?
The question is, in the Code of Bolton, do we have a definition of places of worship?
Under the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Sixty-Seven, parishes and religious societies, the Town of Bolton doesn't have the authority to limit status of church privileges. I can read the full declaration if you like.
No, thanks.
Okay.
Appreciate it.
Good.
So you're telling me that you're referencing Mass General Law, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The question is, do we have it in our code? And I think we're looking. There is not currently a definition in our code.
I would like to say that while I appreciate the amendment, without a definition of the code, I think this is too vague to add to this article. code, I think this is too vague to add to this article.
Bob?
I would ask if the code includes the definition of seasonal holiday lighting.
I don't think so.
No, there's no definition for season holiday lighting.
Precedent for something without a definition in the code.
What is in Part 1, Title 11, Chapter 67, Section 3, Status of Church Privileges, and churches connected and associated in public worship with religious societies shall have and exercise and enjoy all their accustomed privileges and liberties respecting divine worship, da-da-da-da-da. So it's, you know, if you want to call it parishes and religious societies, I think we could do that. That's in Mass. General Law.
That's the wording from Mass. General Law. Parishes in what?
Religious societies.
Religious societies?
Yes.
Okay, I just didn't hear clearly. Thank you. Further debate?
Kia Ocean Byen 702 Main Street. Although, I feel terrible saying this, but I really don't approve of this amendment. There are some of us who live near municipal and church facilities, and although I don't have any specific complaint against any one religious place, it could be a problem in the future. And I know there is a religious property next to ours, and we have worked with that owner to adjust their lighting so that we don't get a lot of glare at night, and they have been cooperative, and they also turn their lights off at 11:00. But I can envision it not working out if another entity didn't want to work it out, or if the people who live in our neighborhood have different opinions because of the way the light casts on their property. I don't think it's really necessary that we add it. I think it would be better if property owners just worked it out between themselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Roland?
Roll Ocean by Main Street. I really have a comment on the whole article, not the amendment, so I'll wait.
Okay. Anyone else? John, do you have any debate out there?
None.
Okay, then we have a moved and seconded amendment, so we are going to vote on the amendment first. And the amendment, as I understood it, is to add under Section B, Number 2, Letter H, places of worship as an exemption. Is that correct? Yes. Okay. So that's the amendment, and we're going to vote on that. It is an amendment, this is two-thirds, right? No, the amendment is fif...
Amendment's majority. Yeah, amendment's majority. The article itself is two-thirds.
Okay, so all those in favor of the amendment to add places of worship to the exemption list, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. The nays have it inside, this is majority, John?
Nays have it outside.
Okay, that amendment has been voted down, and now we will go back to the article. Is there more debate on the article, Roland?
Yes, Roll Ocean by Main Street. I support this article. I think it's good. I will say that I think our, a number of our municipal buildings and our schools are really among the most egregious examples of not complying with this proposed regulation. And I would like to see, I don't want to make an amendment because I think this is a good article, and it's not onerous, and it doesn't inhibit safety, and it's kind for the planet, and it's courteous for the neighbors, so I'm in favor of it. But I would like to say, you know, a number of our neighbors and I, we've been in communication with town officials and school officials about issues at the Houghton Building and at the Emerson School, and the town's been very accommodating, thank you, in making changes to improve the situation. The schools have been somewhat accommodating, but there's still a lot of lighting that simply doesn't comply with what these new regulations will say. So I would like to see the town voluntarily move to comply with its own regulations, with the town's own regulations, as well as the schools going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other debate on Article 13? Bob?
Yes, I question...
Bob, can you just give your name, please?
Bob Johnson, Coventry Wood.
Thanks.
In B. 3, A., I am questioning what static color is. Is white a static color?
Does the planning board have an answer to that?
So what that's trying to get at is really any static color, so it's the continuation of a solid color.
Like white?
So white would be continued. Oh, no, no, sorry, it says color, but color-changing lights and static coloring lights, meaning it's going to be a continuous, like red, or a continuous blue, or a continuous green. So it would not be white.
White is not a color.
Yes.
I think that's...
So to clarify, did you say that white is not a color light? Okay, so white is not included in Section A.
Off-white. Or, I mean, you know, if you get a light bulb, it comes in, you know, many shades of color, from blue to white to yellow and so on. It's pretty undefined, and this is pretty careless, I think.
Thanks. I think this refers to color, purely color. Okay, any other debate on Article 13? John, anything out there?
No.
I have a question.
Hang on. John?
No questions.
Thank you. Did you have something else, sir?
Yes, I would like clarifications, since the summary says that the, it's for regulation of outdoor lighting associated with businesses, commercial, and industrial uses. So this is to control business, commercial, and industrial uses. Churches and religious organizations are not listed among those, nor are they listed among the exemptions. So I suggest, I move that this be sent back to the planning board for further consideration.
So what would that article be, what would that amendment be, move to? To table?
It's to table.
Well, we've got table, the article, and we've got postpone indefinitely. So what would you like us to do?
I think it's, I, my preference was my first motion.
That was defeated. What would you like to do now?
The second would be to replace, just one second. You know, we're talking about safety here, so we should be concerned about everyone in the community. I would make the motion that exemptions be struck and replaced with a subpart identifying the applicability of the code called for in the summary. So all uses would be exempt except for lighting associated with businesses, commercial, and industrial use. That is the purpose of this, of this action.
Well, I'm going to suggest to you that I think that if we go through the process of voting this amendment, I don't, I don't feel strongly that it's going to pass, and...
Is there no second for a second? There's no second to this amendment.
Understood.
Okay. I'll remove my motion and make the motion that this be tabled back to the planning board.
Okay, we've had, we've had a motion. Excuse me? Did someone second it? Okay, we did have a second. All right, so the motion was to table the article. Is there any, actually, I don't think we debate tabling. We do not. So we're going to vote on this. This would eliminate the article at this point in time. So a vote yes to table it would eliminate the article, a vote no would move us to voting on the article as presented. All those in favor of tabling the article, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. The nays have it inside, John?
Majority nay.
Thank you. All right, now we'll vote the article that has been moved and seconded as it is in the warrant without any changes. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay. That is a two-thirds majority inside, John?
Unanimous.
Okay. Article passes by a two-thirds majority. All right, we are now on to Article 15, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate and appropriate or transfer from available funds or otherwise provide the sum of $16,018 to purchase security cameras for the town common, sponsored by the police department. What's your favor? Article's been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on Article 15?
Kathy Juntz of Fox Run Road, I just have a question. Are there ongoing expenses associated with this? I was under the impression that we have to pay a monthly fee to connect to the cloud or wherever. I just would like to know if that, and if there are, where are they in the budget? Thank you.
Thank you.
If you turn on my mic, I can, yeah, there we go, thank you. And Chief Nelson is here too, if I get any of the facts wrong. So if you turn to the 200 section of the budget under Public Safety Building, and you look at the electric line item, that is increasing $1,020 over last fiscal year because there's an approximately $85 per month electricity cost for this system.
That's correct.
Yep. The, all the other, like the server, the main equipment, there's, what this price includes is the cameras at the town common, and I want to say four antennas to, in order to connect the signal back to the police, back to the police station. It also includes the cost of labor to install everything.
Thank you, Brian. Chief?
If I may, Chief Nelson, Bolton PD, that recurring cost that they're talking about was along the line of the body cameras and the cruiser camera. At the time I was estimating it, the company had told us we were going to go through their server, and it would be another $278 a month for our IT provider to care for the server. At this time, we don't need that because, one, I've got body cameras on a grant, and if the other article passes, we'll get the cameras for the cruiser. And they've told us at WatchGuard that it's a standalone system, so I will not need that recurring cost. It's just electricity.
Thank you, Chief. Any other discussion? Roland?
Roll Ocean by Main Street. I just was curious if there's any incidents or any reason, you know, behind this in terms of determining that we need to put us in the surveillance mindset at that location.
And Chief Nelson, Bolton PD, we've been very fortunate not to have any incidents at the town common. It's a very populous spot. It's going to become even more popular with more events, attractions that go on there. The cameras are there, we just want to incorporate them into our system.
Thank you. Bob?
I would just like to add that there have been cameras on the town common since the town common first became, or shortly after the town common became the property of the town. They stopped working a year and a half ago, two years ago, and all we're doing is reactivating, putting back in place what was there before. So this is not installing cameras where there were no cameras ever.
Any other discussion on Article 15? John?
Michelle Dowds, Sugar Road. Do we have any cameras on any of our other properties? The fields?
I believe that's a question from outside. Do we have cameras on any other property? Yep, Bob?
We have outdoor cameras behind Town Hall, we have outdoor cameras in the library parking lot, and I'm not sure about the DPW, but certainly behind Town Hall and in the library parking lot, we have cameras.
So the answer was yes, in the library parking lot behind Town Hall, possibly DPW. And I do know that we put a camera out at the Little League Snack Shack several years ago after it had been broken in about the fifth time, so. Any other questions? Thank you. Seeing none. The article has been moved and seconded, it's a majority vote. All those in favor for Article 15, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That passes by majority. In the auditorium, John?
Majority pass.
Okay. Article 16, Cruiser Camera System, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds, sum of $17,660, to purchase a camera cruiser system for one cruiser, sponsored by the police department. Article has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on Article 16? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Unanimous inside, John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Article 17, Fire Truck, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of money not to exceed $800,000 for the acquisition of a fire truck. This has been sponsored by Bolton Fire EMS. The article has been moved and seconded. Do we have any discussion on Article 17? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. That was a two-thirds vote, and it passed unanimously inside, John?
Unanimous.
Okay, that passes. Thank you. Article 18, Bolton Fire EMS Ambulance, to see if the town will vote to transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved for appropriation account or transfer from available funds, the sum of $257,000 for the purchase of an ambulance. Article's been moved and seconded, sponsored by Bolton Fire EMS, and this is a majority vote. Any discussion on the ambulance purchase? Seeing none. All those in favor? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Okay, that's unanimous inside, John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. That passes. Article 19, Gross Vehicle Weight Dump Truck Body and Plow, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate, borrow, or transfer from available funds, a sum of money not to exceed $115,000, for the acquisition of a $19,000 gross weight vehicle dump truck body and plow, sponsored by the Department of Public Works. Article has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the dump truck body and plow? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Passes unanimously inside.
Unanimous.
Thank you, John. That passes. Article 20, Plow and Associated Equipment for $46,000 Gross Vehicle Weight Dump Truck, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate transfer from available funds or otherwise, the sum of $10,000 for the purchase of a plow and all related equipment for the dump truck, sponsored by the Department of Public Works. Article has been moved and seconded. Any discussion on the purchase of the plow? Seeing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Passes unanimously inside, John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. That passes. Article 21, Town Building Evaluation, Department of Public Works sponsors, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds or otherwise provide the sum of $50,000 to fund an evaluation report on the condition of all town buildings. Article 21 has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the town building evaluation? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, nay. Passes unanimously inside, John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. Article 22, Library Driveway Replacement, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate transfer from available funds or otherwise provide a sum of $30,000 to replace pavers in the library parking lot, sponsored by the Department of Public Works. Article's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the library driveway? Seeing none, will vote. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Unanimous inside, John?
Unanimous.
Thank you. That passes. Okay, we now have another consent agenda for three articles related to the local schools here. And again, we're looking to... Actually, let's see. It is four. Yep, four articles. I apologize. 23, 24, 25, and 26. The consent agenda for Articles 23, 24, 25, 26 has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate on the consent agenda to vote these together? Let me do this. Does anyone want to place an article... A hold on Article 23? None. 24? None. 25? None. 26? John, any holds on those?
No holds requested.
Okay, so we have no holds. Then we would vote on the four articles at once without debate. All those in favor of Articles 23, 4, 5, and 6, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous inside?
Unanimous.
Those four articles pass. Thank you. Well, not exciting. I want to remind everyone that our election is Monday, May 10, and we do hope that you will vote, whatever way you find appropriate to vote. And would ask for a motion to authorize the election. Article 22 has been moved and seconded. Is there any debate? All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously. John?
Unanimous.
Okay. And then a final article. If everyone could please return their trail markers. Very important. And we'll have a motion to dissolve the meeting, please. Motion's been made and seconded to dissolve the 2021 Annual Town Meeting. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Unanimous inside, John?
Unanimous.
I'll take that as a unanimous. Thank you very much. Appreciate everyone's help tonight.